Welcome to Trinity County Board Supervisors. Supervisor Brown.
...of the United States of America and in the Republic of America, one nation under God, in this world with a living justice law.
Okay, we're gonna adjust the judges slightly. We are moving to 1.1, up above the public comment, and then we'll have comment on that item, and then we'll roll into the new chair, we'll handle the regular public comment, and then we'll take the agenda as it is. All right, so, item 1.1, discuss appointing the chairman and chair pro temp, otherwise known as vice chair, per the government's manual, no fiscal impact. So typically, we are rotating, but we have to still have an official nomination, motion, etc.
Which one are we doing?
What? We're doing the chair. Yeah, or we could do them combined as well.
Our motion to appoint Supervisor Chadwick, that is the chair, to support.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Oops, sorry, I went a little too fast. Any comment on this item before we move? Okay, I didn't think there was any, so, um, all right, moving back to the board. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, so, congratulations Supervisor Chadwick. On to, um, pro temp vice chair, nominations, or vice chair?
That would be Mr.
That would be Supervisor Brown.
Brown? All right, I'm moving on to, um, make Supervisor Brown to pro temp.
Do I have a second?
One second.
All right, any comments from the public on this item? All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, so moved, congratulations Supervisor Chadwick and Brown. Have a great year. So Supervisor Chadwick, do you want to change places or add our next phrase?
I can go left and right.
Okay, so, um, then I am turning the agenda over to you, as well as the gallium. And we'll go right into public comment.
Public comment, this time is for information from the public on matters not appearing on the agenda. All comments are limited to three minutes and must pertain to matters within the jurisdiction of this board. When addressing the board, please state your name for the record and address the board as a whole to the chair. No action or discussion will be conducted on matters not listed on the agenda. However, the chair may refer the subject matter to appropriate department for follow-up or schedule the matter on subsequent board agendas. It's public comment time.
Jim Stillwell, Hayport, California, still trying to get, uh, this situation with the Trinity Mountain Community Healthcare District on the agenda. Their tax, that their tax is illegal and unconstitutional. And, uh, I gave these supervisors a, uh, a pamphlet that I was directed to do, and, uh, shows what constitutional articles are being illegally assessed against me, and, uh, the citizens of the PUD property owners that are paying the PUD deal, and to discriminate against them by not having the whole county take part in this tax, the hospital. It also states in that Constitution, Article 7, 11.5, or 11.7.5, that, uh, they cannot include or exclude any part of the county in initiative. And it also states in there that, uh, that the private citizens cannot run, uh, hospitals and things of that nature. I want you to look into this, you give me on the agenda. Thank you.
Jim, at the end of this table, could you please put your name and your contact, how you would like us to contact you, and we will follow up with you. Thank you.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Well, Happy New Year, Madam Chairman and Board. I thought I'd start the year with some fun news. Um, I had, I am Kelly Gant, and I am president of the Trinity County Chamber of Commerce, and I'm also on the board of the Shasta Cascade Wonderland Association, which markets the eight counties in Northern California. And I talked to you about the use of the Chamber's TOT money for a magazine article, in a German magazine, This Is It. It came out December 14th, and so we got the cover, there's the cover, and it announces, it's a Wild California, Shasta Cascade, Trinity County, and the Shasta Cascade got the back, and we have a six-page spread inside. And when I translated it, because it's all in German, the entire article is about Trinity County. So it's about, they talk about our Alps and the Jazz House and the museum, and it highlights a number of the businesses in Trinity County who are Shasta Cascade partners. And, so this is an excellent example of what a partnership can do for marketing Trinity County. So any opportunity that might come to the board to support the Shasta Cascade Wonderland, like most organizations, it's kind of a pay-to-play type of thing. So I think that's why we got in this year, because the Chamber had used a lot of their TOT money to go to, um, the trade shows and the photographer that came to the county, and so there was a lot of investment, and this is the payoff for that. So, um, thank you for that, and, um, the Chamber had given their TOT money to the Visitors Bureau, so the Visitors Bureau kind of spearheaded this. And I do have translations of the article for you that I will give to, I guess, Tina, and then she can pass those out, thank you.
Any more public comment before?
Good morning, Happy New Year. I'm Dr. Tammy, Douglas City. Um, this isn't something you guys can do anything about, I just would like you guys to acknowledge it. We have lost B.E. Smith of Trinity County. He was a very, very good friend of mine. We taught the Constitution, he was at every one of my events. He helped me raise, um, a ton of money for my terminally ill and chronically ill children that I support, including shutting down the state highway, because we pulled so many people. Um, he was an activist, um, he was for the patients, and, um, he was from the show. They also did Weed Country on the Discovery Channel, making up, kind of putting Trinity on the map, maybe not the way some people wanted, but he was, he did do the fight for the good, and he fought for the patients, and he was a veteran. And, um, I would just like to let everybody know, thank you.
Any more public comments before we move on to consent? I mean, seeing no more public comments, we will go on to consent?
I just have a quick question for Council. Council, I know you had spoken to Mr. Stillwell on the differences between our jurisdiction of that and the hospital tax. So, um, we have a new ED at Latcom, and maybe she could help you answer some questions to him, which I'll, I just want to make sure that I remember that correctly.
Before consent, I was reminded of presentations, and so, um, the first is Title 2.1, to present the outgoing chairman of the Board of Supervisors within Grave Gravel. And Dr. Coons is gonna hand this off to you, and Judy, I wanna, um, I wanna thank you. And when I was thinking about what I wanted to say specifically for you, the word commitment came to mind, and your commitment to Trinity County, to this board, to each one of us as, as individuals. I know this last year you've had, um, an unbelievable amount of things that you had to deal with. You showed up right after surgery, you never missed a board meeting. You, you always put the agenda and, and the county in front of your own concerns. And I'm glad that three follows two, I'm glad that you are my example, and I applaud you for that. So, with that, Dr. Coons?
Thank you very much. Yay! Appreciate those kind words. Thank you, Board. I know you all should have. Harris out the parking lot? Thank you all, should have.
Yeah, Subaru, share the love.
Right, or the Tesla. Thank you, Board members, it was a great, uh, it was a lot of work on our place this year. And welcome new board member who completed his first year, how does it feel?
Good, still here.
You're right, you're still here, so, um, thank you, it was, uh, one of, what, my third year as chair, and every year as chair is different, and every new development comes up is different from the last. And I wish you both great success in your chair and vice chair positions. And thank you, Board members, for all your help and all the work we have done for the county and of course, county employees and administration, and, yeah, administration councils, so thank you very much.
So moving on to item 2.2, we're going to receive a presentation from Trinity County Visitors and Development Bureau, Trinity County Historical Society, Leaverville Chamber of Commerce, Hayport Alliance, and Trinity County Information Services regarding, oh, I skipped a whole page, or, excuse me, Hayport Chamber of Commerce, Trinity County Arts Council, Humboldt Trinity Recreation Alliance, Trinity County Information Services regarding their coordinated marketing plan. Do we have, thank you.
Good morning, I'm Travis Finch, I am the president of the Trinity County Information Service. We run the Visitor Center here in Leaverville, and, um, the new TOT contract required us to offer the coordinated marketing plan between all the recipients, so that we weren't duplicating any, anything. And so we met back in November and came up with a plan, so, if we have another slide. So these are the, the partners, Trinity County Visitors and Development Bureau, Trinity County Information Service, Arts Council Historical Society, Leaverville Chamber, Humboldt Trinity Recreation Alliance, and the Food Board Chamber. So we came up with, uh, kind of a list of what the challenges are for tourism in Trinity County. And one of the main ones is access. We, we're remote, the only viable ways to get in and out is by roads, and usually those are blocked, at least for the past couple of years, by roadwork, at least one of the main roads always closed by roadwork. Uh, and also, another barrier is that we don't really have viable commercial airports. All the runways are too short for commercial flights, though they are still used for private aviation. Uh, the other issue is infrastructure. We don't really have large enough restaurants anymore to accommodate tour buses. Oftentimes, when they stop downtown, they have to split up and go to multiple restaurants. We don't really have adequate parking, at least in the Leaverville area, for a lot of the events that we have here. Also, as everyone knows, we don't have very good cell coverage here, and particularly for the younger crowd who might come up from the Bay Area. That's a problem for them, because they can't get on Facebook or post on Instagram, and a lot of them actually rely on GPS, so that's also the important component of it there. Also, the lodging, we, we don't have enough places for people to stay. But one of the main issues is businesses just aren't open on the weekends when tourists, tourists are coming through. The other issue was seasonality. Most of the activities that are marketed here are fair weather activities, boating, hiking, camping. So we have about five months of off-season. But we do have some opportunities we can take advantage of that, um, don't require that much effort on our part to get some more tourists here. Uh, one is that Shasta College is, uh, they have a tour class. This was kind of, it's kind of a recent development. They are willing to bus people up here on their buses and let them explore places in Trinity County. We also have the Road Scholars who come through, and they are actually the group who brought to our attention the fact that their group usually needs to break up amongst multiple restaurants. We also have a local connection with KIXE now, Dave Cox is now the general manager for KIXE, and, um, he has let us know about a good opportunity where we can redo, um, marketing videos for, for Trinity County. There are also other regional marketing efforts that are going on. Kelly Gant mentioned one of them, Cascade Wonderland, um, working with them. And we also have the opportunity to do multi-day events. Uh, at our recent, one of our recent Chamber of Commerce meetings, uh, someone commented there that there are other communities that have actually been revitalized by having festivals and multi-day events. So we came up with a list of goals that can hopefully help increase tourism. One is to build awareness. A lot of people don't even know that Trinity County exists, it's kind of this, you know, hidden wonder up in Northern California, so hopefully through, um, the marketing plan that we've come up with, and there's a list of different things that all of the, uh, members are going to do, the, the partners in this plan, and I'm not gonna go into all of them. The next is brand recognition. Trinity County doesn't really have a brand. I think of like the Sundial Bridge for Reading, I mean, that's known all over the world. So I know that the Visitors and Development Bureau is going to be using some of their funding on, um, kind of rebranding Trinity. The next is to just increase demand through these multi-day events that I mentioned earlier. And the last thing is coming up with some benchmarks, because we've never really, kind of quantified what the, uh, how much TOT money goes in and how much that helps generate to bring back out. So we're gonna try to track that. So, our strategy to achieve all of those goals, first, we're going to do more advertising and outreach, primarily online, also with print ads, and then the Visitors Center also answers a lot of questions by phone, and we also send out a lot of material by mail. The rebranding I mentioned earlier, um, the Visit Trinity website is going to be redone. Also going to participate in the KIXE video. Film Trinity is a new website that's going to get ramped up. We haven't really had any movies shot here recently, I think the last one was shot here in like the 30s, but, um, it's, uh, it's a great place for filming, you know, outside forest, mountain-type video, and, but there's no real easy way for people to, for, uh, production crews to find out, you know, what all's available here, so that website will get ramped up. The Information Service is also working on a couple ideas. One is "Made in Trinity," and that is to, um, market goods that are specifically made here in Trinity County. There's a "Made in Humboldt" website, and we're hoping to kind of emulate that. The other thing we're working on is a Weaver cam, Trinity cam. Greg Greenwood used to do this years ago, and we're hoping to kind of revive that and have, um, webcams here in Trinity County, just to kind of let people see what's going on right here, right now. I've already spoken to Dr. Coons about, uh, starting with a webcam on the roof of the courthouse in downtown, so people can see what's going on, and they might even see Bigfoot walk across the crosswalk. So, um, with one of the, uh, main goals being to attract more people, um, we have events that we put on, and all of the partners in the, the TOT plan participate in these in one way or another. But yeah, LaGrange Classic, Frontier Day, Salmon Festival, Ruth Lake Festival, Fourth of July, Car Show, Mountain Magic Christmas, so some of the funding that all the partners receive helped towards putting these events on, and as a result from some of these, hopefully people will stay the night in hotels and generate more TOT dollars. So finally, this is how we're going to hopefully track all of this. The Visitors and Development Bureau, I believe it is, is going to be working on, um, Google Maps, and I think also the Arts Council will be working on using Google Analytics to kind of track when people are clicking on their Google search. Also, we're all going to work on increasing our presence on social media, and on Facebook particularly, you can actually track the number of clicks and the number of people who see your ads. And hopefully, the people who put on these events will report back to us that they've seen increased attendance as a result of our marketing efforts. And hopefully, the local businesses will also report back that they have seen an uptake in, uptake in their business. And lastly, just seeing increased TOT dollars into the county. Hopefully, that will be a good benchmark of, of our plan actually working out. Oh, okay. And I just got handed a little, um, note here that says the LaGrange is going to be reopening March 1st, so. All right, any, any questions for me, and if they're really specific to individual, um, partner organizations, I'll try to direct you to them.
Does the board have any questions? We'll just, no, we're on the line, we'll start off with Keith.
Travis, thank you for the presentation. I know you just gave us a hundred thousand-foot overview, so, I just had one comment, is when you talked about the opportunities, all the opportunities seem to be from the Shasta side, and I didn't see any discussion of, uh, drawing, trying to attract people out of Humboldt side, and maybe that's already being done, but.
Well, at the time we put this plan together, I wasn't aware of any, like, Humboldt regional marketing efforts or anything like that that are going on, and those, this plan can evolve, so, but this is what we had put together in the time we were permitted to do it, but we're definitely looking to that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Travis. So I was looking at your, I want to make sure I do the right organization, the Visitor Bureau versus the Visitor Center, um, as an overlaying kind of entity for some of the other groups that are actually producing some of the events in the county. What do you plan to do for this upcoming tourist season to support those events or just overall tourist, uh, activity? We, we now have Full Lake, which we did last year, um, so is there any effort to look at promoting for this season, and what are those?
Now, is that to the Visitors Bureau or the Visitor Center?
Oh, yeah, put the Bureau hat on, I think.
Bureau hat, I would defer to Kelly on that.
Okay, okay. You guys, right now, we see a lot of phone calls at the center, and so the Bureau got it, okay.
So, the Visitors Bureau, right now, I'm happy to say, um, the majority of our board now is lodging owners. So with all our TOT, the lodging owners, I have, we've come up with a plan, most of it is brand awareness. So our, our effort is to getting people to know that Trinity County exists. Once they get to the Visit Trinity website, we're, um, increasing the, um, we're adding more content, and we're pushing it down to our partners, so people can easily find the North Grange Classic, they can find our partner businesses at the lakes. So we're, we're gonna do it that way, so drive them to Visit Trinity, and then we then make it really easy for people to click out and get information down. About 85% of all the people coming to the county found out about us from online. So, that's gonna be our, our main strategy on that. And then working with Shasta Cascade, um, my biggest beef right now is that Visit California doesn't even know we exist. If you look at the Visit California website, Trinity County is mentioned, I think, once. So, that's one of our big efforts. Um, Visit California gets, I think they're at $2.9 million or more a year in money to market California, and we're not there. So that's gonna be one of our big goals, is just to make sure that we're on their site. We don't have enough money to do good marketing without just leveraging what other people are doing, like Visit California.
And what will it take to get involved at a Visit California?
So, um, I'm meeting with a gentleman from the Weed Chamber of Commerce. They have kind of the same problem, and I think we're gonna end up just going to the Visit California and be, these board meetings, and just becoming a pain in the neck, until they actually get the articles that we send them up. We send them a lot of stuff, and it never gets up there. So I think we're, the push is gonna be, you're ignoring rural California, you're ignoring like all of Northern California, um, so, um, we're gonna do that, because the, when people come to California, they come to San Francisco, the Napa Valley, LA. The second time they come to California, then they start branching out. So Trinity County is gonna pick up the second and third time visitors. So that's why we still need to have that information there, and I think we just need to sit down and really push the issue of Visit California to get us up there.
Supervisor Chadwick, do you have any questions?
Couple things, one's a comment, and, um, right when I got elected, I started working on a little tourism kind of thing. And I talked with the Starville House about it, and Jill with the Arts, and it's kind of like, uh, In Trinity, where you have the pin locating the location, and where people can hashtag In Trinity during their experiences, um.
Sort of like selfie spots, is that what you're thinking?
Well, also like as a method of identifying some of the activities, and so, I know it's hard to see, but you've got the deer, and the hiker, and the raptor, and the fish, um, attend, things like that. And, um, so at some point, I'd love to come and have a talk or do a presentation with all the entities that would be utilizing this kind of, uh, brand momentum.
That might be very useful in the, um, Arts Council, about the grant to buy the software to do itineraries, and so it'll be online like map, and it'll say, this is what you can do in three days, and you click on a bunch of stuff, and that might be a great place that's useful. The other thing that Jeremy brought, brings up that, um, I want to mention is, we don't have all our businesses on Google Maps, and that's a big deal. I mean, we're in push, and we're gonna have a Chamber mixer in March, and the main focus is how to use Google My Businesses and how to use Google Maps to get every one of our businesses having a, a pin when people come into town, because people open up Google Maps, they zoom in, and if they don't see the restaurant, they don't see the art gallery, they don't see the little store, they're not gonna stop there. Tourists pass through Trinity, and we need to find a way to stop them. I mean, they come from the coast, they only have 30 minutes to go, and they're in Reading, why stop in Leaverville? They're coming up from Reading, they used to stop, it was like, oh, we just made it over Buckhorn, we need to stop. Now it's like a slalom, slalom course, they just go, yeah, that was an easy 30 minutes, and they continue right through Trinity's, uh, Leaverville. Trinity's, uh, Weaverville. So we need to figure out how to get people when they're traveling through the county to stop. And I think Google is going to be our main way of doing that, and I think that your icons might be useful in that. And that'd be kind of cool.
And the other thing I was curious about is the display case at the Capitol, and if, besides if it's been, when the timing is, if there's a way of incorporating some sort of digital link in the display case, so like either a Facebook thing or a scan code, something so that, I think it's over 1,000 people a day walk by the display booth there. Something where if they see like, "Oh, Trinity County, this looks neat," they can quickly take their phone and scan a scan code or put in a phrase into their thing that's going to kind of connect them more into the county.
Susan, is Susan right here?
Yeah.
So the booth is designed, it's being done all by volunteers, so it's taking a little bit longer than we expected. It's going to be really cool to have a glass fish, and it's really, they have a great design, and we should have a presentation on that. But we're hoping for spring, I understand, to have that all done. It's in a great place right now, because they moved the entrance to the Capitol. So they enter right where Trinity County's booth is, and we're the first one on the row. Have you seen that?
I haven't seen that.
The location? So it's right there, so it's a great location, and there has been talk of using a QR code, and we can put an adhesive on the glass, and so people could actually scan a QR code.
Cool.
And get them to visit Trinity, therefore then all to all our events and all to our partner organizations. So I'll put you on the list for our next Visitors Bureau meeting?
Yeah, or the Chamber of Commerce.
Or the Chamber of Church?
Chamber of Church.
Okay. Thanks.
Are there any more questions or comments from the board? Yeah? So I want to thank you, I want to thank you, Travis. Clearly bringing it up to modernization and having data we can track. You can't measure what you can't track, I think is wonderful. We look forward as a board to continuous updates, and the presentation on the Sacramento display case as well. So I want to thank you both. Thank you, Travis.
The Visitor Center also tracks all of the calls and contacts that we made, and we didn't track so much before, but we're tracking more now, and that will be a good chunk of data to look at, you know, six months from now, a year from now.
Yeah, I like data measurements. It really helps us to know and project. So thank you very much for doing all that. And I know that all of this is done through volunteers, and we appreciate that. Trinity County runs on volunteers, and the spirit of Trinity County bleeds through those volunteers, so we appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Just for reference, Shasta County is spending, in Shasta County, $40,000 on their display case, and I think we're spending $500 on ours, thanks to Supervisor Denny.
Thank you very much. And so before we move on to consent, I would like to take a 10-minute break. Bring it back to order.
You guys are supposed to switch chairs.
Sure. Tina just asked me to switch.
You're supposed to switch chairs.
These items include routine, non-controversial matters and will be acted upon by the board by one roll call motion. A member of the board, staff, or public may request an item to be pulled and considered separately. Pastor Denny? Members of the public, would you have anything that you would pull from the consent item? Seeing none, we bring it back to the board. I would entertain a motion. So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor? Oh, we'll call, thank you.
Two ready for the question?
Yes.
Two ready, Morris?
Yes.
Two ready, Grove?
Aye.
Two ready, Brown?
Aye.
Two ready, Charles?
Aye.
Okay, item 3.3, Supervisor Lawrence. Yeah, I just want to thank Paul for bringing this to our attention and just ask us for a letter of support on this much-needed activity, if you guys can, if we can help you achieve these larger distances. So thank you for bringing us this letter. And did you have anything else related to the letter you wanted to speak to, Paul?
I try to be time-sensitive, but just to give a little background for the benefit of the board, and thank you for considering this letter of support, and for members of the audience. You know, this started with the Hallein Fire in August of 2017. And if you remember, that burned a little over 22,000 acres, destroyed about 54 structures, thankfully no loss of life. The Forest Service did a report, the fire started on BLM land, but the Forest Service did a report that blamed Trinity PUD infrastructure, power line for the start of the fire. The PUD, we certainly contest that finding, but as a result of that, the PUD is still facing north of $138 million in fire-related claims. So to put that $138 million in perspective, we have about $12 million in annual revenues. A lot of people, PG&E gets a lot of the press. The $30 billion, that's the number, you know, band of value for PG&E. If you look at the revenue proportionality basis, how much smaller we are than PG&E, the $138 million is four times the financial liability that PG&E is facing. And I don't want to give the impression that the PG&E may be declaring bankrupts or anything like that. That's not at all expected. But when you have an event like that, it has a tremendous impact. You have to look at how you do business. And currently, we have 20-foot-wide easements. And you know, I think anyone that lives here, if you look at our power lines and a 20-foot wide easement and 150 feet tall trees, it just, that's not a level of safety that's adequate, certainly in a new paradigm where we have, you know, roughly triple the number of trees that we had 30 years ago. So when these fires start, they, you know, under the right weather conditions, they're not containable. So my, the PV Board has authorized me to pursue much wider rights-of-way across BLM and Forest Service land, with the idea that, given the new paradigm, fuel, much greater fuel levels in the forest, we have to do everything we can to prevent any ignition. And so that's, it's great that you consider this letter of support. We think there's a lot of fire safety benefits beyond just ignitions potentially from PUD power lines. You know, if you get a lightning strike and you've got a 130-foot-wide corridor, you've got a real public safety platform there, totally retarded to launch backfires. Just, there are other public safety benefits we think of this project, and it's, we're budgeting about $3 million to get it started, so it's not a trivial undertaking for the PUD. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Could you follow up to what Paul said? So I think the legislation came out in '18, requiring utility companies, and I assume public utility companies, to even in private land, to cut a certain degree. Does that legislation help you with this effort on public land, or at least make the case?
So that legislation does help us, but it only helps on privately-owned land. So the term that the legislature uses, state responsibility areas. Unfortunately, you know, roughly 77% of Trinity County is owned by the federal government, and it really does nothing in terms, you know, no matter what mandate the state may have for state responsibility areas, that is not, it's not automatically applied. You know, I would like to think that federal agencies pay attention to those kind of things, and it may help, but we still have to go through the full NEPA process. There's no mandate involved there. So on the federal land, it's a different issue.
Well, I do have, okay. Since we're talking about clearing of trees and all the results of these fires that we've seen for a couple of years, we see, certainly we've seen PG&E have to shut power down. And I know, I noticed you guys have not had to go that route. I'm told and I anticipated to do that, but...
Yeah. So, you know, you never want to say never.
Right.
And in the right, extreme fire danger circumstances, I don't completely rule out that the PUD might have to do some preemptive shut-offs, but that would be an extremely rare occurrence. And the reality of that is, and I'm not trying to bash PG&E, but we've maintained our infrastructure to a higher standard, both right-of-ways and the infrastructure itself, and we just don't have the same need to do that that PG&E does. You also have to consider the public safety aspects of losing power. You know, here, if you lose power, most people lose water. So you have to consider the negatives that go with the potential positives of a power shutdown, so we take those into account. I will say, though, a number, about 6% of our customers are impacted by PG&E shut-offs, and those are in Forest Land, Iron Palm, Grouse Creek, and Down River, or Big Flat Substation, because we have four substations in those remote areas that are served by PG&E transmission, and unfortunately, when PG&E shuts them down, there's nothing we can do about it. And there's really, there are no reasonable alternatives to that scenario either. So we do have some impact.
I received a few calls from constituents that were concerned about herbicide use in this project, and just looking to have some sort of reassurance that that wouldn't be a priority as a method of treatment, and to honor the county's resolution on herbicides.
Well, so the 130-foot easements, to kind of frame it, we've got about 350 miles of power line currently over federal land. Most of that, well, about 275 on Forest Service, and about 75 on BLM. And we're going to move from 20 feet to 130 feet, but that doesn't necessarily mean a clear cut in every area. I will say this, the process of going through this, it'll be completely public at both BLM and the Forest Service. Obviously, you don't go through a NEPA process on anything of this scale without a lot of public input, and we're going to look to manage those right-of-ways in the best, you know, the most environmentally conscious and effective way possible.
So while was also affected District 3. So I appreciate you taking the time to clarify this. I would concur with Supervisor Brown's concerns about the use of herbicides and pesticides. And I would ask County Council, is there a way that we could add language into the support that the future keep maintenance of the 130 feet, that it would be an agreement between the Trinity County and PUD that it would be no use of that herbicide and pesticides? Would that be allowable to be added to the backup letter?
You can modify the backup letter during this meeting. It's been pulled, so you have an opportunity to do that. You can't do a formal agreement, but you can, as part of your letter, restate what you've just stated. It wouldn't be a binding agreement until you got the agreement of PUD as well.
Would you be comfortable with that, sir?
Well, the letter of support, we're grateful for any letter of support you might provide. In terms of the details of managing the rights-of-way, yeah, I don't think we can do an agreement here.
We wouldn't do a agreement here. It'd be something later.
I don't see that there's been any public input on this. I also think that you're holding TPV hostage by bringing this forward right now. What's presented for force of may is simply a letter stating that we support what they're doing at this point. And that's, if you want anything else, bring it back to the board.
And I would add, the letter that you have, it doesn't say anything about herbicides one way or another. The county could certainly weigh in on that if the time that comes up.
Thank you. Dan, more? I would just say, BLM is pretty responsible and responsive, and responsive, I should say, to our request on herbicides in general. So I don't think there's a need to put it here. Another one, that is a comment. Public want to weigh in on this?
Motion to approve.
I don't see any public movement, so I'm going to bring it back to the board.
Motion to approve as presented three. Done one. Three, yeah, we got three.
Mr. Brown, seconded. Having a motion and an approval. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the same sign, seeing none, it's passed unanimously. Okay, Keith, item 3.5.
Yeah, Madam Chair, this is an alcohol issue, and I'm going to recuse myself of this.
Item 3.5, find no objection to the issuance of daily alcohol beverages license to Trinity Center Volunteer Fire Department facility to serve alcohol beverages at their dinner to be held at the 100F, and have their own way of saying it, call in the Trinity Center California on February 29th, 2020. Any discussion?
Motion to approve.
Any comment from the public? Seeing none, we bring it back to the board. So moved.
Second.
You've been seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, having seen none, it's passed unanimously. Please let the board pass. Thanks to you.
He's got it.
Moving on to reports and announcements. Reports from department heads.
I think we put them on the spot. Yeah. Supervision Officer, Senator, speak on, if he had on the board today.
Yes. Would you mind sharing your report out, Ms. White? Thank you.
Good morning, board members and the public. I'm here to answer some questions and clarify statements were made at the last board meeting. First off, I'd like to say if I have an item on the agenda, I or someone from my team would be here to answer in questions. And if I see an item on the agenda that I feel like can answer or assist in, I typically am here. So back to the 12/17 meeting, this was not my item. And I had, and knowing that I had onsite training with my property tax management system, I sent out an email to the board, the CAO, and the county council, offering answering questions if they may have regarding the training of unified school board bond measure prior to the meeting. I didn't get any questions from anybody except for CAO Koon. Per the California Elections Code, the deadline to submit documentations to an election official is no later than 88 days prior to an election. 12/6/2019 was the 88th of the March 20 election. On 12/3, the school board presented to my office a resolution and a tax statement requesting to put a bond measure on the March 2020 ballot. The school district met the key minus 88 deadline. Backing up to November 5th, the board approved Resolution 2019-098, authorizing me, the elections official, to conduct all federal, state, and local elections in the calendar year 2020, which sets normal practice for California counties. With this resolution, the board does not need to approve any other resolutions for elections for the calendar year 2020. Doesn't say that they can't, it just says they don't have to. The school district submitted their resolution and tax statement to me and the clerk of the board, which qualified it for this election. There was also a petition filed with signatures verified. There was also a petition filed with signatures verified and a petition certified for a cannabis tax measure also qualified for this election, all done prior to the March 2020 deadline. My item on November 19th was to acknowledge receipt of my certification of the cannabis tax petition. It was not to approve the measure to be placed on the ballot. Since I found the petition sufficient, California Constitution, Article 13(c), Section 2(b), states because it's a tax, it must be submitted to the voters and approved by the majority. I have Resolution 2019-019, authorizing me to conduct all elections in 2020, so this measure will be on the March ballot. The board's supervisor does not have the authority to approve a tax, it must go to the voters. Therefore, that tax measure will be on the ballot. Now to the question of why, on 11/19/19, did I say it was the deadline, when I permitted, submitted my agenda item acknowledging the receipt of my certification? I said that because my understanding, county council wasn't available the next week, which was Thanksgiving. I wasn't available the following week, the first week of December, because I was at train. And Friday, 12/6, was E-88, the deadline to submit anything to my office. And also, this measure was going to be on the ballot anyway, because it's a tax, and by California constitution, it has to be submitted to the voters and approved by the majority. So, at that meeting, the board could have requested some reports and whatnot, but that's really the only thing they could have done at that point, so that's why I said, and with not having timeline, it was the broad deadline. So I hope that sheds some light on the questions being asked and provides clarification.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Thank you.
Good job.
Thanks.
Madam Chair, fellow board members, I just want to take a couple of minutes this morning to talk about our new drug court program here in Trinity County, the grant that's supporting it. Also give a shout out to some of my justice stakeholders in this community that are also supporting this project. I want to start with just a little bit of a brief history of where we started on this, where we came from. National research shows that as much as 85% of all of our inmate population in this country has a substance use disorder, an active substance use disorder issue. Additionally, another 20% actually have direct connection between substance use disorders and the commission of the instant offense or the crime that they're in jail for. Local statistics here in Trinity County are actually a little bit worse than even national average. We've had some informal studies that we've done that show that our numbers are even higher, and the problems that this causes in our system is exponential, and it's still over a factor. And I addressed some of those issues before the board, before our overcrowding problems in our jail, our inability to be able to fully address lower level offenses in the community in a manner that prevents ongoing recidivism of lower offenses. These, these issues are definitely something that for years we've been wanting to address, and the idea of implementing a treatment drug court program or model here in Trinity County actually started back in 2016, when a group of us attended a Justice Leaders Systems Change Initiative in Sacramento. This was sponsored by the National Judicial College and the Center for Health and Justice, supported by the White House Policy on Drug Programs. The program was designed to foster organizational and practice changes to increase public safety, create cost savings at a local level, and improve outcomes of justice-involved individuals suffering from substance use disorder issues. Our team represented a cross-section of our state court agencies, including our presiding judge, the chief and assistant chief probation officers, deputy district attorney, the deputy director of Behavioral Health Services, and a program manager from HRM. As a result of this meeting and symposium, the team concluded that the solutions to our problems locally here included, one, creating a more efficient or an effective strategy to persuade our justice-involved individuals that are most in need of treatment to engage in those services. Two, to create and maintain collaborative, community-based programs and services that can adequately meet the needs of this specific population. And lastly, to identify and capture enhanced statistics on this population to ensure ongoing effective practice changes that meet our target goals, specifically in relation to our services and the limitations that we have here. Fortunately, Judges Harper and Herrick have continued to support and direct efforts to bring these types of programs into our county, and I'd like to spotlight that Sylvia Green with the courts, who's going to actively be involved in the drug court program, is here this morning as well. And we've also got other partners in this program that are here, Conny Sessman Smith is here, and we've also got Shelley with the DA's office, I'm sure I'm missing a couple other partners here, but this is definitely a collaborative effort, bringing everyone So, this collaboration and this project, along with some of the other projects that we're bringing forward, including Step Up and the Day Reporting Center, these are going to go a long ways to shoring up our, one of our legs of our three-legged stool of community corrections being public safety, accountability, and competency development. Without the latter, the stool can't stand, and the other programs and the other efforts become futile. So, we're really excited about bringing these programs online. It's been years in the making. We have tried for a number of different avenues for funding, and we've finally been successful in achieving that, so, again, I'm really excited to bring this program into Trinity County, and I feel it's going to be very effective in addressing some of the issues that we have.
Do you record, board, tell me for a question?
I do.
Okay, of course. Thank you, and I meant to totally, I'm just to thank you and all the departments that are working together to bring this forward, a much needed and overdue. I know funding has been very limited over the years. Will this have any impact on juveniles? I remember parents talking to me about the drug court in the past really helping their juveniles, and if we can get them early and get them on the right path, we can save a lot of time and money and heartache down the road.
It is an adult drug court program, so it will be specific to adults, however, some of the fundamental principles can be applied to our juvenile population as well, some of which already have been. Matter of fact, some of the tools that we're thinking of incorporating in the adult drug court program, such as the drug sweat patch, which is a 24-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week monitoring. There's no beating the desk because you wear the patch all the time. These are some different ideas that we're hoping to incorporate into the adult program as well. And of course, with the Day Reporting Center, a lot of the same concepts with DRC and the modality of treatment, the oral rehabilitation therapy program, also applicable to the population.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, thank you for the report. Well done, congratulations too.
Hello, and good morning, members of the board, members of the public. Kim Hunter, the building and planning director, wanted to give you a short overview of permits issued with the Environmental Health Department, septic permits, I don't have wells today, and our building permits for the last, how they compare in the last three years. In fact, with septic, I'll go a little bit farther back, and let's start with those. In 2014, so five years ago, 32 permits were issued for septics. In 2019, 128 septic permits were issued. With increases, of course, starting around 2016, 2017, and then building up into the hundreds approximately for 2017, 2018, and 2019. For building, in 2019, we issued a record 791 permits for building. 791 permits. This is compared to 597 permits in 2017. And I apologize, I don't have numbers going as far back as 2014, but I believe we'd see a similar jump from 2014 to 2015, as we're coming out of the recession to 2019. So, according to my building official, Phil Santiago, this is a record, and I still want to bring this to you in the public to just illustrate that we have several factors here, but obviously, starting in 2016, these numbers going up, and that cannabis not only impacts one department, it's money and the positive changes, but also a lot of extra work for our staff regarding the impacts of the cannabis program, and both septic and building permits. We see some things in little wells that happens today now. So, yes, I just want to, I have very good staff, they work very hard in keeping up with this, this volume, and I wanted to share that with you. The other item I'd like to share today is something I'm still digesting myself.
That's fine.
Excuse me.
Quick question regarding that, so, are you able to pay staff what, what, what we charge for permits?
No.
Oh, okay, okay. Another thing I'd also like to see if you're doing, while you're doing this, since you can't pay staff with the cost per permit is...
Well, we can pay staff, we don't, we can't pay yours.
I know, I, I know what we're talking about, no one else does, but we do. Out of those permits that are the big jumps, how many of them are completed, are in process, and have failed? That would be an interesting item for us to hear.
That is, would be very interesting, and I will, I will get those numbers back to you on the 22nd, along with the, I also don't have our planning project numbers or our cannabis licenses, so I'll come back with more information on the 22nd.
Oh, no, not the one.
No, this is interesting information.
It is.
And a very good question, because we have many, many building permits sitting on the shelf waiting to be picked up, especially for residences.
Thank you.
Any questions on that one? Okay. The second item today is, I think I may have briefly mentioned this before, it may have come up in discussion, but as of January 1st, we have new state fire safe regulations in place. It's pretty thick, a lot of changes, and one of the, probably one of the biggest changes, especially impacting rural areas with a great deal of state response area designated, which Trinity County is state response area, is, in the past, for every parcel that is over one acre in size, you've had 30-foot, automatic 30-foot setbacks regardless of zone, 30-foot setbacks from the property line, all property lines. As of January 1st, that now applies to all parcels regardless of size in the state response area. And so, so my, like, my parcel that's in Trinity County, it's .98 acres. And so now, the 30-foot setbacks will apply to that parcel. They will apply to a ongoing one beyond there, half acre smaller. So, the challenge for rural communities, especially those properties where you have wells and septic systems, to plant everything on a very small parcel under an acre to, to fit a well and a septic and a 100-foot setback with those, and a structure on the property is challenging. Now, with that, it does not mean that these parcels are now, can't be developed or unbuildable. It just means that all parcels within the SRA, for most of the county, I believe, all of the county, will need to get exceptions, exception granted, exemption from Cal Fire, and they'll be, what they have done in the changes is build in certain alternatives, building alternatives. So, you can mitigate that, and you can get exceptions to go closer to the property line, it just is going to get, it's just something smaller parcels under an acre are going to have to deal with before. So, another, basically, you know, obviously, there's reasons for this, but another route to jump through, building a new home or developing your property, but I think this is a trend we're going to be seeing more of with wildfire disasters in the West, and especially California.
Okay, will those affect any permits that are already in play? Are they grandfathered into the new law, do you know? If you don't know, that's fine with me.
I would believe so, generally, generally, the way it works, if these are permits that come after January 1st.
After January 1st, the permits that you've been talking about, if they're already in play, if they're grandfathered in, or they have to have...
And it's the same thing, like with the building code, there's building code changes, you're, as long as you got your permits in by that time.
Right, that's pretty heavy duty stuff. Has RC, RC looked at any of this that you're aware of, or?
I haven't.
Okay, because this affects all, all rural counties. This is, this is a pretty big thing.
This is a very big thing.
Okay, the public needs to understand, so you might want to get together with Sally or somebody like Sally, as good as Sally to...
Yeah, so I guess some of your things, each other, yeah.
Supervisor, you want to ask a question?
Thank you.
You know, I'm going off the top of my head, but I know there's new rules that came out for ADUs, which almost seem in conflict to this, to what they've allowed for ADUs to happen, and have no setback on property lines, if I recall correctly.
Yes, there are big changes with ADUs coming, many changes, but with ADUs, they also really emphasize conversion of existing structures, and in that case, that structure would be grandfathered in if somebody, an ADU is an accessory dwelling unit, granny unit, in-laws quarters, rental unit, that are now lodged by right, state law, in any zone where residential uses are lodged by right.
But I don't think they've discouraged new building or a new, you know, granny pettas, they used to call them, to build one either for ADUs. They haven't discouraged that.
Oh, no, quite the opposite.
Right.
Encouraged. It's been one of the most successful changes in the laws affecting the housing crisis, and as long as that ADU is a maximum 1200 square feet and sort of primary dwelling is a wonderful option for people. And yes, they have made the development of ADUs lessen any burden, so I have, I do agree with you. I believe there's these fire standards, and then there's ADUs, which are encouraged too, so, as the plant, as the planning department, our planning staff, it's understanding those laws and making sure they're implemented consistently. It will be a challenge.
Another question, Supervisor.
So, in the town of Trinity Center, where we have all quarter acre blocks, this would take half the usable space, but 30-foot setback.
Yes.
So, could you give me an examples or a couple of the big examples, how you mitigate it, or are you not definitely...
Still digesting that. There, yeah, certain building materials, siding comes to mind, incorporation of more fire resistant materials.
Cinder language.
Yes.
Well, when you get that, just drop me a note sometime, it's just kind of interesting, because that's, that's pretty draconian to pay, if only it's half your property.
Yes.
Actually, it'd be a wonderful follow-up, both Supervisor Finney and Rose had some wonderful, if you can incorporate that at a later date, and I think that the point that you made, Doug, and you made with Sally is great, I think that it'd be wonderful to get information out to the public, so, mesedine.
Other question?
Actually, okay.
What is, what makes it a state response area? Is that above the, sure?
Yes, a state, SRA.
Okay.
It is designated, it goes back, there is a mapping system called the FRAP. It is designated, it goes back, there is a mapping system called the FRAP map. And I don't know exactly what the acronym stands for off the top of my head, but it's a fire map that's put out by the Department of Forestry. And it designates the low, medium, high, and very high fire hazards, very zones for each county.
It's designating who's responsible to respond to that fire, especially if there's...
Designates the severity, and also you have local response areas as well, where if you have protection, it's a local response area, and that's not subject to Cal Fire.
And there are local response areas within the county as well?
No, we do not have any in Trinity County. And so it's based on types of fuels, topography, and I'd be glad to bring one with me and share it when I give a presentation in the future. One suggestion would be to invite Cal Fire, our local contact with Cal Fire, to come and answer questions at the same time, give a presentation, provide you with more information on these changes.
Suggests that, and we'll pass that forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other department heads, any more reporting?
I'd like to put him on the spot too, because I think there's another item that is noteworthy, so I'd like to put Director Tippett on the spot. He is the president of CAC, which is the County Engineers Association of California. We kind of had a theme today that nobody knows about Trinity. Well, with his new position, they're going to know about Trinity, because he is now the president of CAC, which is a law in both the state and the federal government. And if LA County wants to get on the agenda, they have to call us before they get the speakers.
They have to call the brig.
So I'd like to put him on the spot, and also congratulate him for his appointment.
Okay, congratulations, thank you. I thought you were going to bring the trophy in, at least a hat.
Me too.
The hat, the unfortunate ox that keep the hat and got damaged by the other president, the past president, and he's fixing it right now. But I did forget the trophy this morning, but it's a nice big, heavy, heavy thing that they, and it's kind of something they enjoy doing to presidents, make them look something else around. What's even worse is they've got this absolutely hideous picture that they get some retiree, and you've got to hold on to it until the next factor retiree. But seriously, to give you an example, we are, as the county engineers are heading Washington, DC, beginning next month. And one of the things that I've learned real quickly is I'm the one that puts together the agenda and the talking points that we have to our legislators and our administrators of our different programs that we have in Washington. So I have a very strong say as to what is on the agenda, what we're going to talk about. And in our trip, it is going to have some rural orientation for better coordination between federal lands, entities, and state and county folks that are trying to get things done, particularly better coordination between Forest Service, federal lands, and counties after fires, something that I want to work on. Because the federal folks come in and they help the Forest Service recover, but they quite often forget that the local end is in on damage too. And they are nice to tell you what your problems are, but they don't assess, and I'm trying to keep them to take upon that. So it, as CEO had mentioned, it does give us voice, and it is one that I, while I am supposed to represent the whole state as a whole, I am, I'm using my voice as a small county as much as I can.
Any questions? Congratulations once again.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Last chance for the department heads. Oh, there we go.
Good morning. I'm much, maybe a year, two years old. So, just a matter of time. Goal for next year is survive next year. Do you have some information for you, our oversight, how cannabis folks have switched, which department does compliance, from enforcement to licensing? I've got a hand, a little color than that, but everybody's... We have a new person, Paul, his name's on there. They're chomping at the bit to come out and do canopy inspections, and so this month we're explaining to them, we have this thing called winter. And that'll let you know where they're starting from. So trained up a bunch last year, trained up a bunch next year. And also some good news, my biologist, Angela Blanchard, has passed both her deputy sealer and her deputy commissioner licenses, making her able to be licensed as a deputy. The problem there is Trinity County never had a deputy position description, so I got one to Richard today. I'll come to the board for that in the near future. Those, oh, also, and very proud of our grower group that has been formed. If you haven't got one of these, please take one. That is probably singularly the best thing I've ever been involved with in my entire career, to come to a new industry with a new bunch of growers and be part of them getting organized. And this is really the focus group to run all issues by grower related, and that's basically all I have for today. And happy new year, and thank Adam and all the mom community for inviting me to the New Year party, which Adam worked on. Any questions?
Yeah, what's the update on the hemp legislation?
Let's see, my buddy Rick Gorola, who now is Shasta County, who was the head of it all, has dodged that bullet, and now it's Milton down in the valley. Our moratorium is set to expire probably in May. My recommendation right now, and it isn't going to change unless a miracle happens, is that we continue that for 11 more months. And I get to use my growers group as to provide direction. From, we did a survey, if there was interest in the commodity, we looked at what's going on in Oregon. And the problem is Trinity County still does not have enough flat ground. Unless we iron out some mountains and make a great big valley, this crop does not fit us, and there are serious problems between, they just can't grow side by side. One can affect the other. If I pollinate my grower, my cannabis grower with pollen, his value just immediately diminishes. If the pollen from a breeder type of cannabis goes to hemp and can affect his test, it's a very low test, .03 percent, remember percent is two more zeros, and they test just the top, you know, it could ruin his crop. They are not compatible. Sonoma County just came out with their hemp ordinance, probably the toughest one, and there is no pollen allowed outdoors, period, which would fit what Trinity does. You have to understand, people have 30, 40 years into breeding here, that they've spent time, energy, and effort coming up with strains that are all put at risk if we have outdoor hemp products.
Joe, we have two more questions.
Yes.
I just wanted to stop, I just generally wanted to know what the timing and stuff was. So you told me that, that you're going to be asking for a moratorium another year.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
That's it?
Supervisor Morris. A totally unrelated question, sorry about the state laws.
Sorry about the Michigan law.
We have a lot...
We're...
Yeah.
I think we have played our team with refs. Fair enough.
Any other questions for the board? Okay, thank you for that report.
Thank you.
Okay. I think we're going to close the department heads, I think that was it. And we're going to move on from, report from county administrator.
Yeah, I'll, real short, I don't want to take too much, Chair Chadwick's thunder, but I was honored to participate on, I think it was the 21st of New Year's, and what we have in front here was presented to me for the county, a symbol of the culture, and attended down in Hefor, and it was an amazing event. I'm very honored to be a part of it. The food was amazing, the clothing was beautiful, but I'm going to, we'll go ahead and, I'm sure Chair Chadwick is going to talk a little more on it, so I won't get too much more, but I just want to thank the community for inviting me. It was something I look forward to attending every year.
I have a question for...
Go ahead.
So we've had a lot of reports of break-in in cannabis licensing, non-licensing, robberies. Since we don't have an ad hoc anymore to kind of look into these, I would request you to maybe have a discussion with Sheriff to see if there's ideas, how we could strengthen, anything that we can do to help strengthen and protect public safety that maybe was an issue in Oregon, or maybe there's nothing we can do that we could work with him and get his ideas.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I just want to follow up to what you brought up. We could get an idea of numbers of those licensed farms who have had issues versus non-licensed farms. We've always had the concern about information going out there, locations of our licensed farms, and what vulnerability that may present for what we're seeing in the last year and a half or so. So I'd like to get any, some type of numbers on the sheriff's department.
Okay, I'll do that. Did you want to, did you want to present to the board?
Yeah. Just as your next update, I guess.
Okay, do that, thank you.
Any more comments on that? Okay, so, our first president, Madam, would you like to... Oh, what are you doing? No, except I had the great pleasure to attend the event, as you did as MCA of Princeton. It was a fabulous event, and I think it's going to keep continuing to grow, so it's going to need a bigger space. That was it for, since our last meeting.
I have no, I kind of traveled, but I missed one thing that I forgot, council doesn't give a report anymore. Also, and I guess this would go to CEO, also, the CCA program that we looked into a while ago, and last I remember, we were asking, and for those on the board, community choice aggregation, where people can apply power from T-Put on PG&E lines. I know the last I heard, which was quite a while ago, that PG&E was slow walking the information we need from them. I'd like to see if we can kind of kick that in the rear, or do we have any new information?
I know, you're correct there, slow walking that. We requested the information two plus years ago, and have followed up several times since then, and have not received response. I'm going to work with some other jurisdictions that have gotten information from them, see if they have any tricks that we can utilize, but at this point, we have to kind of strategize about another approach with them, since they're not providing that information, but we will follow up on that.
Okay, so yeah, if there's something that we can do to kind of kick them in the rear, my estimation is that the people at Trinity have lost about a quarter million dollars in overpayment to PG&E.
Thank you. Supervisor, do you?
I have no OCT, no out of county travel, but just listening to what went on with the New Year celebration, and knowing that Kelly Gann is here and Travis, I'd be a good opportunity to build some.
I was asked for our contact as well, so...
Okay.
Thank you.
I have no, out of county travel, and yeah, nothing to report on.
Well, I will report out also on the event that was held, Second Annual Month New Year in Hefor at the fairgrounds, only you feel like Cinderella, it's transformed into just such a beautiful event. It's a feast for your eyes as well as for your palate, and we had dancers from Sacramento that entertained us, the costumes, the artistry involved is beautiful. The culture is warm and welcoming, you do not feel like a stranger when you're with the month. They make you feel like community and family. I would encourage everyone next year to put it on the calendar now and to celebrate. We also had Sheriff Saxon. One of the ceremonial is to walk away from last year. You go through a gate, and it's decorated, and it's beautiful, and has helium balloons, and you cut the strings of the balloon, and you allow the bad to be evaporated into the atmosphere. You just push it away, and you embrace the new year. And in doing that, you crave for health and prosperity for yourselves and your community. And Mr., our sheriff, our sheriff participated in that, and then later, he was able to speak to the community, and he and undersheriff had to leave early, and the reason was they were going to a graduation for a cadet who is bilingual month. So this will be our first integration of our law enforcement. So this is, was widely celebrated. We also had, Supervisor Morris was able to speak, and Dr. Coons, and a mayor from Elk Grove, who is of month descent, who I believe was approached later by our director of Ag, and said, took him back to his childhood youth, when he was in the Boy Scouts, and he would hear of the enthusiasm of being an American, and how much it means to be able to be a part of our country and to thrive where you have freedom in America. So I just, I want to end that, this 2020, I'm not going to report out anything else. It's a privilege and an honor, as three of you have known, you've all taught me something, each one of you. And I hope going into 2020 that we can rally about, around the fact that we live in the greatest nation, and we get to serve the people of our community. So I thank you, I know that Jeremy has taught me a lot already also, and I hope I do a good job for you. So thank you, thank you for this privilege and honor to be a chair. Appreciate it. Thank you.
So the only ad hoc we have is the federal lands legislation. Do you have anything to report out?
No, at this time, we're still waiting for you to get your maps and do your thing, and we haven't gotten them yet.
I actually have a request that I put together to John Driscoll, and I had not heard of these maps, and I was pulled by the fire chief and Steve Benton up in what to ask for. So I've just got that information, so I'll be sending the request, and hopefully, it's electronic, so we'll all be receiving maps. So thank you.
Sheriff, you want some maps also, or...
Yes, I do. So I'm going to request John Driscoll to get us all the information of our individual areas, so.
So in a reminder, we were looking at possible national lands to get received in...
Correct.
Every area that, every supervisor should look in their area and see if there's things that...
First specific.
First specific, for the good of the county or the people. None of it.
Well, we'll rest that.
Well, if I thought I could get away with 1.55 million acres, I might...
Leave it alone, let us be.
Yes, so there's a request, we'll take a 10 minutes? Okay, we'll say 10 at the most minute rate.
10 minutes.
Coming back as to the boards, county matters. These items include nonroutine or controversial matters and are listed alphabetically by department. A member of the board or staff may request that an item be heard out of order. Members of the board, are you okay with the order?
Oh, yes.
Okay. Staff, there any reason to move things around? Item 5.1, child support services. Waive the provisions of County Code Section 2.60.090 (G), unauthorized North Coast... parentheses G, and authorize North Coast Regional Department of Child Support Services to close the third Wednesday in April and the third Wednesday in October commencing in 2020. Welcome. Jen, could you speak into the microphone so everybody can hear you a little bit? Sorry, I know.
It's okay. I'm Diane Dara. I'm the Staff Services Analyst in the Child Support Department. Unfortunately, Lisa couldn't be here today. She's in Sacramento, so she asked me if I would represent our county. They are requesting this just twice a year for our office to close so that we may drive over and attend the full staff meeting in April and October. Those are the months they chose for the weather because we all want to drive. And there will still be coverage for all of our clients. And we have the ECFS line and the ABER line that they call into, and the staff there. Ventura County handles that, and they can answer the questions. And we'll also have other counties that can cover any of the computer work that needs to be done. Child support is on the statewide system. So, we can all look at each other's and help each other's clients out, which is great for our area. A lot of times, we do genetic testing for other counties where people are up here. So, there won't be, you know, there, people will still be able to get assistance. They'll still be able to make payments. The only thing they won't be able to do is to physically come into the office and see someone. We have a kiosk in the lobby, and the water district door will be open. So, they'll still be able to come into the office and make the payments through their office.
So, any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Bringing you back to the board.
Sounds like a great plan. You sure you want to go, Seth?
On favor?
Aye.
Who's you not on this one? I can ask for that first. Thank you. Clerk of the Board, 5.2. Pursuant to county fee waiver policy, find the Coffee Creek Volunteer Fire District's mini split project provides a benefit to the public and is not for the purpose of fundraising. And approve the Coffee Creek Volunteer Fire District's application for waiver of county fees, waiving building fees in the amount of $129.23. Potential loss of revenue for the building department in the amount of $129.23. Is anybody here to speak to it? Do you want to speak to it?
Sure.
What has your name?
Catch up real quick. So... Remember this one. I do know. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was going to say. This, of course, Coffee Creek is one of the departments that has no outside revenue except what they raise selling pies and fundraising events. This is to upgrade their kitchen so they can do a better job at dealing in the public events and with their trainings. And it's just a small, little remodel that they're working on.
Any questions? Go ahead.
This is one of the small things that this board has to do for a board owner. Bakesale Fire Department, I would strongly support this.
Moving into the public? No public comment? Bringing it back to the board?
I'll move to accept 5.2 as well.
Moved in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Item 5.3. Tabled from December 17, 2019. Appoint supervisors to represent the county on various boards, commissions, committees, and task force. I'm on 5.3. Did I skip something?
No, I'm sorry.
Is Rick in a hurry?
No.
So, at the last meeting, there was some discussion that I hadn't been able to contact some of the people that I felt I wanted to have input. So, I appreciate this delay. There are three committees that are multi-agency and multi-group. The Fire Safe Council is a good example. You have the BLM, the Forest Service, Watershed, Caltrans, some of our department heads, the firefighters that are from the different districts, CalFire, just a whole litany of people, RCD. And the Fire Safe Council is very crucial. It's part of how we get our funding and grants moving forward. I've had the honor of being there, actually, I think, since you appointed me my freshman year. And what I found is that it's invaluable. That the value that I get is not just the information while I'm there, but also specifically in meeting, the people. And the potential of three new supervisors, as I was thinking about this going forward in 2021, I would, I would like to make the recommendation that the Fire Safe Council, the chiefs, and the collaborative, we have a primary person, but we rotate that the other supervisors have the opportunity to also participate twice, twice a year when those things are met monthly. And some are only met every other month, so that would be once a year. So, I'm asking the board what their feedback and what their input on that. Yes, question? Yes.
Fire Safe Council, I don't think we have as an official committee.
No, no, we don't.
Okay. I just thought I was...
Yes, yes, John had mentioned it to me, and I went, and I've continued to go. It is not on the list. It's not in their files. But this, this is where, as you know, the connections are made. You learn who to call, under what circumstance. And so, it is not on the list. And that's why I'm using that as an example. The Chiefs Association is, and the collaborative is. But the Fire Safe Council is not. And I'm just looking for feedback. Yes, I saw it.
I have a question for council. So, let's take the Chiefs Association. If a supervisor that wasn't primary or the alternate wanted to go to attend to watch, that's allowable, isn't it?
Correct, they are allowed to attend and observe. There is prohibition against not participating because that would be a violation of individuals. Burnout county matters.
They can go and meet whoever and chit chat.
Absolutely. Yep, sit back and listen.
On any of these?
Correct, yes. And then, I think with some committees, you have a third person in motion that attends regularly. That's, there's no concern regarding that.
Where, if I may add, the Chiefs Association is, you know, a little different than the collaborative, where the two board members who attend the collaborative certainly have...
Have voting.
Yes, thank you. Voting rights too. And some of those discussions are pretty lengthy and in-depth. So, you know, I think, you know, Jeremy, for instance, has been the second supervisor attending. I'm using this as an example. Where I think it's, you know, taken him, you know, a good year or two, because we don't meet every month, to really grasp what's going on, who's who. I wouldn't feel a little, you know, if someone's just throwing somebody in, in and out, doesn't mean somebody else can't, another board member can't come and listen, as we just heard. Sit in the audience and just hear the conversation. So, that would be my concern. And as long as somebody can still sit and hear the conversation in the collaborative, there's nothing wrong with that.
I add to that, sorry. I'd add that you have to be there or two consecutive meetings.
That's right.
So, I don't know if I can buy a lot of those. These committees might determine.
The collaborative, I think, is the only one like that. So, County Council, this would be for you. So, if...
I need to level with you first. Who needs to be there for two months to be collaborative?
Yeah.
Right, I understand. So, how is this relating to the Fire Safe Council? And which Fire Safe Council are we talking about? The Trinity County?
Yes.
Maybe it's Hyampom, also has a local...
Correct, so that, actually, that is a really important point. And I appreciate that. Your county, or your district, and in Hyampom specifically, is the only civilian who heads up a local chapter of a Fire Safe Council.
They're very active.
And that is why specifically on the Fire Safe Council, I believe the exposure to the other supervisors to even acknowledge what the Fire Safe Council is. I just know that all of us have incredibly packed schedules. And so, to just remember it on your own is going to be a little difficult. I'm talking to both at the Fire Chief and to individuals at the Fire Safe Council. They would look forward to, and they were encouraged by this idea. And so, Larry Winner is the only person I know on the Fire Safe Council that will call him a civilian. I know he steps up to the plate and does a lot of things. But he's the only individual on the Fire Safe. None of the rest of us have anybody participating. We don't have any local chapters, if you want to call them that. So, and that is a concern because, again, some of the grants and some of the other things that are coming in are not based on a civilian participation, but on a county-wide fire safe. And these community wildfire protection plans, they're all part of it.
What's your goal with this one?
Well...
Do you want, do you want to have more exposure of the Fire Safe Council? Do you want more participation?
Yes, yes.
Okay, and what about a presentation from them? I'm sure we've had it before.
That would be, they're willing and would love to do that.
Well, this is your...
Well, I'm wanting feedback from the board. If they, if there is no consensus that, right now, I'm the only board member that goes. I would like to see each district rotate in, especially going forward to 2021, not just looking at this year. There's the potential of three new members.
But you'll do that in 2021.
I won't be here. Well, if there's three new ones, I won't be here. And so, I'm trying to be proactive, looking to the future for our constituents.
No, I agree. But I think right now for 2020, I think the Fire Safe Council, we can, many of those folks, A, attend the Chiefs meeting, A and B attend the collaborative in different ways. A lot of the same Fire Safe Council do attend the collaborative. So, a lot of times, we're covered there. And C, for me, I know all of those folks.
Yeah, that's...
And the disaster council. And the disaster council. Right, I forgot that.
There is an influx of some crossover, I agree. But we're talking three new members. So, it sounds like, you know, you guys are not in favor of it. Is that, and so, this is just for discussion.
Yeah, it's not, not in favor. It's that I have attended the Hyampom
Right.
on occasion, when they've been requested. And I get a lot of information, but it's their business.
Right.
And they know what they're doing. And they have all the players in place. When they want something, they feed on me. As they used to. You know, Carol Miner is very active.
I think, you know, for the, in terms of the Fire Safe Council, I think it wouldn't hurt, council can correct me, if they sent us all an email as a reminder of when their meetings are.
Oh, they do.
And I don't know if I get it or not. So, that would certainly be a reminder. And if we're not violating any Brown Act type of activity, we could go sit and listen. And if there's another supervisor, it'd just be the two of us.
Okay, and that is back to the County Council. If there are two designated supervisors, you have your primary and your alternate. And the alternate or the primary are not present, and that third board supervisor is present, are they then allowed to speak?
Well, it depends on the bylaws of the organization they're dealing with. Sometimes you have to actually be appointed to a committee in order to have a vote.
Right, right.
But if they, they're asking for participation from the county, and the other board members don't mind them participating in that capacity, then it can't be done.
Do they have a public comment?
The Fire Safe Council does. And it's not on the agenda for the Chiefs, but I think they would accommodate a supervisor.
You know, my only concern would be if you're representing the county, you need to have been authorized to represent the county by the other four board members.
Right.
And so, it would have to be something such as you're doing today, where you brought it in advance and said, you know, alternative one, alternative two, alternative three, so that they have the authority to speak. Otherwise, again, I think public comment would probably be appropriate. Or if they ask you specific questions, there's no prohibition against answering.
Or they agendize an item and specifically invite the chair, vice chair, or any other who wants to go and speak on a specific subject. Or a lot of subjects, I guess, they really, really are. If you want to add this, I, I think it's crossover, yeah. Because I don't see if, knock yourself out.
You can add two people to it, if that's what you want to do. More people can just informally attend.
Well, what I think I'll do is I will send a letter to Pat Frost with Fire Safe, and then also Amy Reiling as the secretary, and just encourage him to send the minutes and the upcoming dates to each of you and not have it on a permanent rotation the way I was thinking of it, and just hope that you attend.
And I'd like to supervise a Philly's idea that should do a presentation.
I think they would, I think they would love to do that. And actually, with the conclusion of the the community wildfire protection plans, they are assimilating all that data. And I know Amelia's going to come before us. And it might take a little bit longer because there's three people that have been promoted or moved on. So, we're down to a very slim window, city right now. So, just for your knowledge. But I know she's planning on doing that at the Chiefs meeting really soon. So, okay, so, I appreciate your conversation and your feedback on this. So, we'll just go ahead and go down. Airport Advisory Committee Supervisor Groth, you contend?
Yeah, I would like to stay on because we're just actually getting this back and back in the business after basically a two-year hiatus. But I will point out that Jeremy still needs to get somebody on that. And I believe that John now has a vacancy.
So, it should be advertised, I assume?
So, I...
Seattle, could you look in?
The Airport Commission. You have a missing spot there.
You haven't assigned anyone yet. And if you don't assign anyone, I think we can grab somebody from a different district if you want.
So, I will ask Dr. Coons to meet with you and go over that. And then, if there's any type of advertisement that the county needs to do, let us know.
Tina, Tina usually takes care of it. It's pretty straightforward, simple. I did forward Jim Waddell's presentation, I think, to you.
I saw it outside. I don't know how.
It should be a Pearl Aviation business.
I don't know if the rules say it has to be, but...
It's helpful.
Having at least knowledge of airplanes and runways is...
You'll be able to find someone who might want to move some product out of...
That would be your district. This is more...
Oh, that's Humboldt.
Oh, you're right.
So, let's blame it on Humboldt.
But hopefully, we'll get going again and start taking care of everybody.
That we want. So, Behavioral Health Advisory Board Supervisor Finley, are you still content?
Yes.
And Mr. Brown here?
Yep.
California State Association of Counties, SEASTAC. Judy?
Yep.
Well, we've already planned this.
Yeah, I just want to make sure it's on the list. Okay. Child Abuse Prevention Council. I had asked Supervisor Brown if he would like to be primary, and I did not write down what I put.
Oh.
Would you like to be primary?
I can do that, that's fine.
Okay, so, that's a switch. Childcare and Development Planning Council. That was the second one. I asked you if you wanted to be primary, and I'd be DACA.
I asked you if you wanted to be primary, and I'd be backup.
Is there an alternate for that?
There hasn't been, and... Time is like, they have a one o'clock today that they scheduled. They know I might be late or whoever. But if you would like to attend with me and then decide afterwards, it sounds like there's not a problem for us to attend.
Those two...
They really go hand in hand, yes.
I highly recommend it if you're unwilling to take the other.
I have been nothing.
Okay.
And if you want, I can be the primary.
Okay. It's just it interferes with something else I have, and they rescheduled around me before. So and we can go together today, except if we get out of here in time. Children and Families First Commission, Supervisor Groves?
Yes, I'd like that commission, but somebody else has a huge desire. I'm inclined to stay in there.
Okay. Clusive Glen Trinity Community Action Partnership, or CAP. It's not a primary and alternate. It is both Supervisor Brown and myself. And overgoing, going through the bylaws, just for the knowledge of the board, CAP has in the past incorporated COC primarily in their quarterly meetings because it's a lot of the same players. The governance rules now with CAP and COC, we have to have our own COC. And so we are establishing that. I will continue to be on it, Supervisor Brown. But for the knowledge of the committee meetings, that means multiple monthly local meetings with CAP and COC, as well as annual. So that committee is really now becoming two local committees monthly, as well as the quarterly, just for information's sake. Community Corrections Partnership, Dr. Coons, you're on that.
Need to check with that regarding their bylaws, if they require a supervisor.
I thought they didn't. And I thought...
As of voting.
Thank you. I thought it was the chair, but it's been a while. Tina, would you mind moving, thank you. Disaster Council Board will be, Chairman will be Chadwick. Board Vice Chairman Pro Tem will be Brown. Emergency Food and Shelter Program, it dictates also that it's the chair and vice chair, so they rotate. Emergency Medical Services Advisory Committee, the rotation of the chair and the vice chair. Environmental Service, JPA, ESJPA, RCRC Subcommittee. There are no regular meetings scheduled right now. It's Supervisor Finley and Diane. Are you willing to continue?
Yes.
And Supervisor Finley?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to get Jeremy's input also since he's RCRC.
When was the last time you met?
They meet in December.
Like, once a year?
No.
So there's like a March, June, August, October, and December?
About six times a year if they'd like. And it's usually the day after the RCR meeting.
If you feel it's appropriate for me, I'm happy to take the spot. Or Diane is interested in being the designated.
She can. That's why I'm the designated. I don't want to. And if you want to do that, too.
I'd feel intended if I could.
Okay, Tina, I want the person who knows what we're doing to vote.
Yeah.
So does the primary have to be absent in order for the absentee to vote?
Yes.
Yeah, it just gets one vote for county.
Okay. Is that helpful?
Yeah, yeah, I'll talk with Diane.
Okay. So that was a change. Thank you, Supervisor Finley. Forest County School Coalition, SRS.
Yeah, that's...
You want us to continue with that?
Yeah, they don't meet that often, and sometimes it's connected to NACO and, you know.
Yeah, I believe it's a connection. Golden State Finance Authority, it actually says no regular meetings, but it is a RCRC Subcommittee, and Supervisor Brown, you are RCRC, so you're willing to continue to be primary, and I'll continue to be your alternate. Thank you. Natural Resource Collaborative Formation Group, TCCG, Trinity County Collaborative Group. I'm happy to continue unless someone else wants to do it.
And then it's not an alternate, Supervisor Brown is?
Is second.
Right.
You're good with that? Highway 36 Committee, this is on you.
That's fine.
Okay. Highway 299, Supervisor Morris and Supervisor Brown, alternate. You both continue. We don't meet that often. Maybe once a year. Housing Rehabilitation Business Loan Committee, I expect this to be getting busy. And so hopefully we'll be meeting more. Supervisor Morris?
Yep, I'm fine.
Supervisor Brown. Local Agency Formation, LAFCO. Do we want any changes?
I'm happy to still serve and still as their chair. But I don't know if Supervisor Brown wants to jump in and as alternate just to...
This is about districts?
Special districts.
Special districts.
I would say we're asking a lot of Supervisor Brown.
Yeah, I don't feel like I have too many special districts in my district, so.
I'll get a dear about it if you do now.
Maybe we should.
Well, that's all.
Supervisor Finley?
Sure.
Yep.
Okay, so there's no change?
I'm fine today, but when it come up, I reserve the right to know.
Okay, Partnership and Action for Trinity Health, PAT. Are you willing to continue on that?
Yes.
Okay, Allstate Primary, National Association of Counties, Supervisor Morris, you're...
Yep.
Okay, I'll continue as alternate. NorCal EMS. I would be honored to continue to stay on that one, so.
Right, I'll stay as your alternate, okay.
Northern Rural Training and Employment Consortium, NORPAC.
Yeah, Little NORPAC.
Yep. North Coast Air Quality Management and District NCA QMD.
Yep, I'm sorry.
Stay the same, Supervisor Brown?
Sure.
Okay. Northwest California Resource Conservation and Development District, RCND.
Yep.
I'll stay.
Did you, did you do North Coast Resource?
Oh, I did. I thought I did. I guess not.
Very similar.
Okay, sorry, I jumped. North Coast Resource Partnership, NCIR WMP, Morrison Brown?
Yep.
Now we'll go back to RCND. Are you willing to stay the same?
Yep.
PSA 2, Area Agency on Aging Executive Board, Supervisor Finley?
Unless somebody else is interested, I'm fine.
Okay, Supervisor Morris, you remain alternate?
Yep.
Regional Council of Rural Counties, RCRC, Supervisor Brown?
Honored to continue that position.
I love being here often, so I appreciate you being there. Remote Access Network Broad Board, Ran Board. I believe this is an automatic change, Supervisor Brown. So you will be alternate and I will be primary. Social Service Transportation Advisory Council, SSEC. Are you willing to continue on that?
Sure.
I will too. Solid Waste Hearing Panel, Supervisor Groves.
Yep, that's fine.
Okay. Superior California Economic Development District. We do have two public at large, and I need to follow up with Dr. Coons on that. I will continue as, this requires a Form 700, I believe. So Mr. Brown, would you like, if someone has to be alternate, or would you...
No, actually, like, the one meeting I attended, I really enjoyed it. So I'm happy to remain an alternate.
Thank you.
Unless anyone else would prefer otherwise.
Trinity County Commissioning on Aging, Supervisor Groves?
Yep.
Trinity County Fire Chiefs Association, Judy, you want to be alternate?
Yeah, I can do that too.
Okay. And then you could come, so, you know.
Yeah.
We just got okayed. Okay, I'll be friendly. Trinity County Fish and Game Advisory Commission, and there was some discussion a while back, and...
Totally up for you, totally up for this board.
Should remain in it.
Oh, you need to cut off the whole.
That's what I remember the conversation. I appreciate you being a part of that because I don't think we know stuff ahead of time.
Did you want to turn it over? I'm willing to take it if you're done with it. If you just want to stay, I have no problem. But there must be something secret between the two.
This is our secretary for the commission. Well, I can come to the meeting tomorrow night, okay? I'm not chair. We have a new chair and everything.
Okay.
And...
Okay, so and then after, you can let us know what your decision is.
Because I think it'd be, I think it'd really, I think it'd be a good idea. But I'd like you to come to a meeting first, next morning.
So I'm willing to take it that if you're saying that you would want to make mine effective as of...
February?
Whatever the next meeting is, March meeting, okay.
That makes sense, I'm worried you're scared and dumb.
But you could send me your info on where.
Is it 7:00 PM tomorrow night?
Would you like the minutes after tomorrow night to make sure you...
You still want it, March?
Half the commission is saying it's the management council.
Which is good, which is, it's not bad, believe it or not.
And the other half is constituents.
I'm working on that.
Okay, so we have Finley remaining until March of 2020, and then Supervisor Groves. And then the Trinity Management Council, I cannot see changing that one.
Me neither.
Good with that, Matt?
Yeah.
I appreciate Jeremy's stepped up and as the alternate, which can be a little frustrating, is learning quickly and getting more input in. So, thank you, Jeremy.
I appreciate all the insight you've been able to provide.
Okay, is there any more conversations?
I think the Community Corrections Partnership by law, it's actually in penal code, and it says that the county supervisor or chief administrative officer for the county or designated as a board supervisor.
So it's one or the other in that vote, so we're covered. Thank you, Dr. Finley.
And make sure you go and vote.
When will we get an update?
I think I...
Send out anyone next week.
So am I looking for a motion here, to accept as presented the new assignment?
This is it, seven.
Yeah, I believe we don't need one.
Okay, great. I wasn't sure.
If you look in our code, it needs to be...
On the first manual, during number...
Yes, it does. It does address it, that you have to have a...
Let's do it.
Okay.
Some of it, read it up some.
All those in favor of the new assignments of the committees, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? You don't want any more?
It also says we're not to sit on more than two committees.
Yeah, I do remember saying that.
That needs to change. We need an update. That's not our habit.
Thanks for the...
Item 5.4, approve a revised job description for Deputy Director of Transportation and Engineering, effective January 1, 2020. No fiscal impact. Welcome to vote.
Shall I announce an HR director? So we had pulled this current recruitment. We noticed some modifications that would like to be considered and made on the job description, and we see that it can get approved and we would like this position. Under Special Requirement Section of the classification, it requires currently that the candidate would have both the professional civil engineer registration from the state of California, as well as a land survey registration from the state of California. And there's truly only a few licensees in the state that actually carry both. Trinity County has not had a land surveyor on staff in the last 10 years. This is something that's been contracted out. The department head feels the requirements are not high demand for that, so this has been working well. If we removed the dual requirement, so removed the land surveying license from the job description, it would really expand those that could possibly be applying for this position for our recruitment processes. The other thing I noticed was there are a couple classifications that should have also been added under this, which were not, and we wanted to include those, which would be the engineer senior and the engineer associate two. I reviewed this with the union. They're all in support of it. I'm asking for your consideration and approval.
Any questions from the board? Any questions from the public, saying that we move it back to the board?
I guess, excuse me.
No, go ahead.
You were so quick. That my mind doesn't work that fast. So within this, removing the land surveyor license, we would still then have to contract out for a land surveyor?
That's correct. Unless if I could add, and I have weekend has both licenses, which would be wonderful. We should make it a requirement.
We just have to require it.
If you're looking for a motion, motion to approve as presented.
Thank you.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 5.5 pursuant to Trinity County Code, Section 2.6, 0.41, oh, parentheses, A, authorizing hiring of play 02239 as a DA investigator, one at range 0211, step D in the District Attorney's Office, effective January 1, 2020. Approximate cost and salary and benefits per month for a District Attorney Investigator 1 at A step is $8,661, and at D step is $9,588.
So the District Attorney's Office has been recruiting since April 2019 to fill this vacancy. We have a highly qualified candidate now that's currently serving as a deputy sheriff 2 for the past four years for the county. And with that experience, along with prior experience with other agencies, they far exceed the minimum requirements of two years as a deputy sheriff 2. So the department would like to offer this salary range at D step to this particular individual. Be a huge asset to the department and serving the community.
Just questions?
Just want to make sure, are you looking for two positions to fill or just one at this point?
It is only one.
Okay.
Only one allocation.
I was hoping for two, but that's fine. Sorry.
If you would, it will. She has to work for it.
Any other questions?
So this would mean that we'd no longer be totally staffed at the Sheriff's Department?
That is correct. We'll go down to 19, number 20. But we can recruit at the lower levels to save some salaries.
He's giving away our secrets.
And we have some ongoing recruitment, so there are some eligibility goals.
So I think in front of the cabinet, the three or four.
I think that's important too. And Sheriff May, they say excellent CEO. We didn't mention it earlier, but I think it's important to mention it now. Fully staffed, we're allocated at the Sheriff's Department, except for this change.
Yeah, then the allocations that we have, positions allocation we have in the Sheriff's Department are all filled, minus this one now, but how the sheriff has has people coming through as deputies in the jail that are going through the post academy. So those will be filled and then he's back going. So yes, for what we've allocated, they are filled for the first time in a long time. So appreciate the help of the board to hit that down.
Now, my last night comment, I will also add that DA's needs all the high qualified help that she can get, and so we do have to support her.
Yeah. So any public comment before I move it back to the board? Having seen them, bring it back to the board.
Motion. Go ahead.
Because you've been the quickest second in the West. I'm impressed. I'll move to approve 5.5 as presented.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Any opposed? Thanks very much. So, 11:30, that concludes our open session, we will now move into closed session. Did I forget something?
We have to read the question.
Oh, I'll read the question. 6.1, Government Code, Section 54954.5, parentheses F, conference with labor negotiation, counties designated representatives, David Prentice, Sophia Meyer, and Shelley Nelson, employee organization, the Deputy Sheriff Association, probation police officers, units, management and confidential unit, and general unit, any public comment on the closed session, I don't. Now I can say it again, 11:30.
I was attempting to say, maybe if I can, in manual and word form, that section that we referenced is grammatically incorrect.
It is non-grammatically incorrect?
It's grammatically.
It is.
Because it's got the wrong sentence, so I see where you're coming from, but do it with the sentence of-
Yeah, but it's-
No, you're right.
We'll just stop with-
You're right.
Supervisor Groves, you are right.
But I'd like to-
Can we read that in the record?
We'll get it down.
We'll add that to the manual.
So, the rest of the meeting is not for public, we have to close. Direction was given to staff and closed session, thank you.
Meeting adjourned.
On item 6.1.
Meeting adjourned.